All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call our August 8th study session of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District to order. And ask for a roll call, please.
Thank you, Director Brett Eckles.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry. Vice Secretary Robert Ooten.
Here.
Vice President Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
President Mike Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments, this is a time for people in the audience, persons in the audience to address matters not on our agenda. Any late communicate or written public comments?
No, Mr. President.
All right, let's go to items of study, receive and file the code enforcement report. David?
Good morning, sir, members of the board. This is my July report. This report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. For the month of July, the code enforcement officer focused his efforts on patrols in various parts of the community. The goal is to identify and deter instances of scavenging and residential trash carts left within the public view. In the month of July, the code enforcement staff had a number of complaints regarding scavenging activity in the city. As with most scavenging complaints, the alleged violations take place in the early morning hours. In order to address resident concerns, the code enforcement officer is patrolling the streets by 6:30 a.m. Included below are instances of scavenging that were detected by the officer while investigating specific complaints. A month of July, I saw or captured or encountered eight scavengers throughout the city. One of them was my friend from Eldon, and he was actually issued a citation on July 28th. As included in the report, I caught him in Mesa Del Mar, was probably like three weeks in a row, and so I stopped, made contact with them, advised them to return the items that I had saw him taking. He complied. He didn't have ID, so I had to call the police department, non-emergency line, and they sent an officer. We verified his ID with his birth date and a picture that he had in their system, so. Any further questions on that so far?
Just a request. So I think it was last week or the week before on our trash pickup, which is Thursday.
Correct.
My wife and I were leaving to go somewhere at about 8:30 in the morning, maybe, and I live on a corner, and my barrels go over here, right, in front of the pump station to make to make our poor workers have to move them if they're gonna do. Anyway, the big can was open and there were recyclables spread out all over my sidewalk and into the street. And a gentleman going through. I just politely explained to him that was illegal and to put them back, which he did comply. My point is, we've noticed in our neighborhood, along California Street especially, a big influx of people that I would assume are homeless, they're on bicycles and they have in the same token, and I'm jumping ahead on trash carts a little bit enforcement. For some reason, I've got a bunch of neighbors along California Street that don't want to put their cans away. Just a special request, when you're out and about, if you could take a look.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure other there are other neighborhoods, and as we go to the next additional can, it's, we obviously think or know it's gonna get worse, so. I hate to do that to you, but.
No, no, no problem, sir, and I do, you know, I've gotten complaints from, you know, some residents on Iowa about transients coming in.
But before you do, Arlene, I appreciate these maps that you include with your report. I mean, that gives us a good sense of where this is going on, but I think it's really funny, you look at these maps and look at the names of some of the businesses on these maps.
Yeah, there was, there was a lice there, I think, or something.
Yeah, Malachi's Hot Buns. What do they serve at Malachi's? And then there was one, the one about no more lice or something like that. Anyway, just a little side comment. All right, David, any other question, Arlene, you had a comment?
Yes, I do. In your travels, did you find anybody who, no, let's put it this way, neighborhood that had a problem with the new truck CRNR has with the brakes?
I hadn't received any complaints other than a gentleman on federal called last week talking about some truck oil. He was a little frustrated because.
This is squeaking every time they come to a trash pickup, which is constantly all through the whole neighborhood, and I got them all.
I'll, I'll make a mental note, I'm not sure if you saw the truck number on the back of it. All of them have, you know, a truck number, it's a little easier to figure out which one once I have that info, but I'll find out if it's the newer trucks.
The area is very upset, College Park is, and they're, you know, blaming that I'm not doing anything about it. And so I just want this to go on record that I have done something before this, I talked to some of them. But at the same time, you know, they're saying, it's a new truck, what do you expect? And that's not true, you know, but anyways, it has to be solved.
Okay.
I mean, my phone is crazy.
You should get your toolbox out and go out and adjust the brakes on that. You need to get your tools out and adjust the brakes.
There you go. Oh, there you go.
Thanks, Mike.
Just question on, great job on this, Mr. It looks like he was all over this report, all over town, and then finally you were able to cite him then with some assistance from.
Well, and I, and I think, you know, my kindness has been, you know, like he just said, I'm not, you know, he's not gonna do anything to me, and after so many contacts, it was just, it was to that point where, you know, maybe this is gonna be a deterrent for him.
Boy, and let's just assume it's not. Next time you see him out there, what's our protocol at that point?
My directive is, is to cite him again, and then we'll, you know, go further from there. That was from Scott, so.
It's the guy in Eldon you're talking about?
He seems to be all over, and he is not homeless. I've seen him on our side too, and he's not home, well, okay, unless he's homeless in a Mercedes. Possible, but doubtful.
Start selling.
But keep, that, that's great, keep that, I was happy to see a citation, whether it flies or not, we'll see, but great job, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm wondering, Scott, do we do any education materials relating to the community recycling at Orange Coast College? Do we have videos or, or do we just alert the public that they can recycle?
Yes.
Certain, certain items that are in Coast College. What I'm thinking about is a different emphasis, not that they can, but how do we encourage them to do that? You know, if, if Mike would load up his truck with his neighbor's recycles and take them over to Orange Coast College, that would deter the that would deter the guy, whomever's collecting those things, but, and Orange Coast College, you know, it's several hundred thousand dollars a year in scholarships. And it would get the recycles to CRNR indirectly, so they go to, they go to Orange Coast College and CRNR then collects them from Orange Coast College and so on.
Actually, I got scolded by my wife for putting recyclables in because she goes to Orange Coast College.
That's a good woman.
I've been told. Sir?
That wraps up the scavenging part, the trash container enforcement for the month of July. There were a few customer complaints reported at the district headquarters regarding trash carts in public view. The following a list of locations where trash cart violations were found and addressed by the courtesy notice process. A hundred and seven cases in the month of July listed by the streets and the amount of violations on that particular street. Any questions on that?
Well, it's like Victoria Street was a pretty famous one.
Yeah, West Side has been a little bit difficult for me to, you know, get some, some, some compliance over there.
And typically, you know, I look, Joanne Street had a, had a large number and so did Victoria. Didn't, doesn't a lot of that relate back to the issues we've had over on the West Side with people parking in the street? And they leave their cans out because it's too hard to put them away, I guess.
Not on Victoria as much.
Victoria is probably not as much.
It's the majority is the multifamily.
On Victoria, yeah.
And Joanne as well.
Anything else for David?
I will conclude.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Before we move off of recycling and stuff, I don't, I, I think, I don't know if we've all been to, if you've all been to the fair this year. Who, who does the trash at the fair, Mike, do you know?
I'm not sure who does it now.
It's not you guys. That's what I thought. One of the things I noticed at the fair this year, which I thought was pretty good is all the trash, you know, in all the food areas, not that I went to every food area, but in the food areas, they had three cans. They had a blue can, a green can, and a regular waste can. And people were actually doing, I, you know, you could see people putting their food in the green one and their recyclables in the, the blue one. Could we, at the end of the fair, maybe send a, a letter to the fair board or to the fair and commend them for their efforts on, on helping? I mean, little stuff like that's gonna help even our residents in the future recognize what they need to do, so just can we do that, Scott, some kind of letter, just thanking them for their efforts?
So, so they didn't have a, well, they had a recycle bin for?
It was a blue bin and then a light green bin or a greenish bin, and they had them labeled, I mean, you know, food waste recycling, stuff like that.
Okay, so that's where we're headed in residentially in the future.
Spent a little time at the food area there.
Now, what we do is we get food and we sit there, we don't go to the fair to do anything except watch people.
Yeah, oh, it's great people watching.
Mind boggling. The last question I had, this is a little off the wall, Mike, Marissa, maybe for you guys. With the increasing number of cannabis dispensaries in our city, and we continue to add more and more, are there any particular waste issues with those businesses? I, I know we're not the commercial all or, but just out of curiosity, are there any particular waste issues that we need to?
Not, not necessarily, not, not, not necessarily waste, but more on the wastewater side. They have to get, we have to get a permit on the wastewater side, yeah.
They wash a lot of stuff down?
A lot, well. When you, the plant, the growth and all that, there's a lot of, yeah, wastewater, yeah, coming off.
Now that you, now that you say it that way, but we, we're not, are we doing grow facilities or just sales facility?
Over here, we're doing, well, yeah, I mean, I think we are.
The water, okay, I, I'd heard something about it.
Yeah.
Okay, so nothing really for us to worry about?
Well, just on the, on the wastewater side, we want to make sure they have proper permits.
Okay.
I had a question too. My question is, there's a truck going around and saying that it will wash all the cans out for you. Are we connected with this or it's separate?
No, we have no relationship with that business, it's just a private business going around doing a service for a fee.
They're on their own.
Yes, no relations to us at all.
Okay, yes, it's just all over in Costa Mesa, and I just was curious.
Yeah, they, they advertise on TV.
Yeah, on TV too, but, but I see it in the street, I was just.
You guys can do that anyway?
Another million dollar idea I didn't have.
Yeah, really?
What am I doing?
What do they charge, Mike, do you know?
Is it?
So what do they do with their wastewater? They capture, that's what I, that's what I figured.
They can't, they just can't dump it in the, in the curb, that'd be a violation.
If you see the commercial on TV, obviously they don't show them capturing the water, they just show.
Yeah, but they can't, they can't dump it in the curb, that's illegal.
Well, we want, we want to set a video. Encourage people to wash some, wash their carts out on the lawn, especially the green waste carts. Have, are we still posting that video or?
I mean, it's, it's.
Long, long time ago.
Yeah, it's, it's had, I mean, it's, we have it available, but it's something we haven't done recently.
We probably should, well, how do they capture the water?
These companies, I have no idea.
If you, you know, we, we had that question and there was a video that showed them washing the cart out, but on the lawn.
That's what I've done when I do it, is on the lawn. Yes, sir.
I've noticed those trash car washing places putting stickers on the carts, is that acceptable from CRNR as far as solicitation or?
Okay, I, I would make note of that address and let, let these guys know, I, yeah, putting anything on there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, David. Okay, there's no other discussion, we'll move to the HHW collection program report.
Thank you, Mr. President, Marissa Prado will be giving his report.
Good morning.
Good morning, President and Board members. So this morning, we're doing a five fiscal year report for the district's door-to-door HHW collection program. First, I'll go over a history of the program. In August 2012, the district established a door-to-door program for just disabled, immobile, and senior customers. In 2015, the district started sponsoring a program that allowed solid waste customers to take fluorescent tubes and batteries to OCC Recycling Center. In 2018, July 1st, 2018, the district expanded the door-to-door program to all solid waste customers. Under this current program, customers can request up to three collections per calendar year with up to 25 gallons or 125 pounds allowed per collection. Common types of HHW collected under this program include things like household batteries, household cleaners, paint products, e-waste, sharps, and a number of other items. The fluorescent tube and battery recycling program at OCC was discontinued June 30th, 2021. At the time, the district was contracted with Mercury Disposal Systems for an amount not to exceed $20,000 annually. By discontinuing the program, the district was able to save that expense. Next, we'll look at program metrics. So looking at the charts included with the report, there are a few noteworthy trends. First, pounds collected in 2018-19 was higher than pounds collected in 2019-20. This is likely attributed to customers disposing of a larger amount of accumulated HHW, since this was the first year they had access to the door-to-door program. Second, both pounds collected and number of requests completed from fiscal year 2019-20 to fiscal year 2021 increased. This is likely attributed to customers cleaning out their homes during the COVID pandemic, and numbers did return to pre-pandemic levels the following year. Next, there was an increase in both requests completed and pounds collected in 2022-23. The district did launch a comprehensive HHW campaign, partially funded by a CalRecycle HHW grant that started in the fall of 2022 and ran through fall of 20, I'm sorry, started fall 2020 and ran through the fall of 2022. In August of 2022, the district launched an HHW PSE video along with some other HHW-directed outreach, and this may have at least partially attributed to the increased collections in 22-23. Also worth noting is that the fluorescent tube and battery collection at OCC Recycling Center decreased by approximately 40% from fiscal year 2018-19 to fiscal year 2019-20. And this may have been attributed to customers transitioning to the door-to-door program versus dropping items off at OCC Recycling Center. Staff will continue to monitor the requests and collections for emerging trends. And that concludes my report, if you have any questions, I'm available to answer.
Questions from Marissa?
Marissa, the agenda report says it decreased by 40%. Do you have any data on the tonnage from what it was to what it went to?
For OCC Recycling Center? I have number of items collected, so that's what I use for this 40%. I can look into it and see if we have pounds as well.
Yeah, you know, 40% is a big decrease, but if it's an equal number of tons collected.
I can look into that.
Okay.
Other questions from Marissa? Thank you.
Well, Mike, Mike, do you know, where, where you gone by then?
Both, I know, and I've, and OCC Recycling Center was closed down during the pandemic for a year and two months, I guess, so that, that probably attributed to the decrease in collection.
Okay, so it is, it is possible that it is a a worthwhile venture to continue at OCC, that's what I'm looking for. I mean, I mean, if they collect an equal number of tons that the residents collect as we're putting out major education materials for residents, you know, to use this process. You know, I'm, I'm not sure I have the information to understand that, and so, thank you, Marissa.
Correct me wrong, though, do we, do we know when they drop off those materials, do we know they're from Costa Mesa? Do they have to provide us an address where they're from? We did not know if they were from Costa Mesa, we didn't ask that question, but we did know that they were not businesses, we, when I was there, we wouldn't let businesses drop. You gotta take that in consideration too, some of the materials might not be from Costa Mesa residents, it could be from Huntington Beach.
But, but it gets them out of the, it gets them, it gets them to a proper disposable, disposal place.
Understood, but I, but I guess what I'm gonna, I just don't want, I don't want to be seen subsidizing for another resident, not from our community.
Yeah.
Being for that, but that was only my, my.
Well, we, you know, we collect a substantial amount, and it's important to collect as much as possible, and, you know, I'm not ready to give up on a $20,000 process, you know, if, if a substantial number of tons are still collected at OCC, but, okay.
I do know that the, the amount of light tubes had dropped off as those
Oh, yeah.
The incandescent light tubes have been phased out and the LEDs are phased in, and the longer lasting ones, so OCC was getting a decreased amount, amount of the light tubes.
Yeah, but I, you know, one of the things that I think Marissa said was, you know, we did educational materials. We could have also done educational materials for residents to continue at OCC. And I don't expect we did, except to let the public know that that was a potential.
In addition to the door-to-door program, there's a county-wide program through Orange County Waste and Recycling, so county residents can drop off those items as well, and I think it's four different collection locations.
Well, I know that's available, but for them to drive to OCC versus drive to Huntington Beach or Irvine, you know, they're not likely to do that for a pail of batteries. Anyway, interesting.
The, the, the fluorescent collection, I, I think we're gonna see, as people go more and more to LED lights and businesses are converting to LED lights, you know, for cost savings and things, I think we'll probably see a decrease in fluorescent, the need to do this fluorescent stuff, so. I don't know what you have there, but it's just a, just a comment. Okay, item three, Scott?
I'm gonna turn this over to Nal.
President, members of the board, we are at the beginning of our new contract term with Tripepe Smith, and this contract period is going to be heavily focused on our three-card system rollout. Joining us today is Jennifer Nantwig with Tripepe Smith. She's going to be giving the board an overview of the deliverables to be expected during this contract time, so I will turn the time over to Jen. Jen, I've also made you a co-host if you wanted to go ahead and run your PowerPoint, or I can go through the PDF here.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone. Nalani, if you wouldn't mind loading the PDF there, that would be great, and while that's getting pulled up, again, good morning, President and Board members. My name is Jen Nantwig, a Tripepe Smith principal with the privilege of leading the communication support for the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. This morning, I'll be sharing with you a presentation on the education and outreach we have planned together with your communications team regarding the district's new three-card system. So this morning, we'll be going over just a short, really refresher about Tripepe Smith. We've had the privilege of working with you since 2020, so, again, that will just be a brief refresher, since we are happy to have worked with you for several years now. And next, we'll go over plans for the three-card outreach to include the overarching goals and the deliverables that are in our current scope. And then we'll open it up to questions and answers. And just to have them up and running, I will go ahead and get the PowerPoint up on my end, so one moment while I grab that. All right. Oh, and I apologize, there it is on your screen, okay, perfect. So we can go on to the next page where we talk about introduction to Tripepe Smith. Again, this is really just a refresher, but we do always want to start off any of our communication plans and presentations with the baseline of who we are and what we do, so, as you know, Tripepe Smith is really a full suite of all your communication needs from marketing, technology, public affairs, bringing that all together with the creative services that you can see here on this slide. And we can go on to the next slide. And Team Tripepe Smith is now a team of more than 50 individuals, really spread across mostly California and other western states as well. So we have access to this full team to bring to bear various skill sets from videography, graphic design, photography, website development, and more, so that's our full team. And then next, you'll see the project team, so these are our Tripepe Smith team members that are most closely linked with your staff and who are really working hand-in-hand on the day-to-day work to deliver the scope that we'll be going over. And then our last kind of overview slide is here, and that's our overarching axiom, which is content times distribution equals impact. Whenever we're thinking about the impact that we want to have, that really drives our strategy, thinking about what type of content makes the most sense for the district, and then how we can distribute that content to have the best impact possible to achieve our goals. And next here, you can see the goals of three-card outreach. As Nalani mentioned, the three-card system is the primary focus of our scope in the coming year. And so as part of that, we're working with your staff to announce the three-card system. That's already been teased a little bit as far as the initial information, and we'll be continuing to share details. Next, we want to educate customers on the key impacts, outcomes, and responsibilities. So what will this mean to them and what do they have to do? We want to promote stakeholder engagement and collaboration, so not only sharing information, but providing opportunities to really have meaningful engagement and answer questions, make people comfortable with adopting some new habits. We want to listen to and address stakeholder concerns, so anticipating those common questions, and then, as we mentioned, providing the really two-way engagement to be able to address those concerns. And then lastly, leverage local media to reach wider audiences. This is a pretty significant change that we know other jurisdictions are also facing, and so it is a story that we think we can. And so it is a story that we think we can leverage broader outlets to share. And next, we'll dive into what the specific deliverables are currently scoped to look like. We are scheduled to develop seven pieces of print collateral. So these would be print mailings, whether postcards or bill inserts, a double-sided letter and those types of items. Those are always great to have as your baseline because at a minimum, you can say that you have reached and sent something to every household. So that will be perfect. And then we also have scoped two enforcement tags and cart hangers. So these will be really helpful for the district to incorporate into the door-to-door outreach and provide some on-the-spot feedback for people in how they're doing. And then the next deliverable you'll see here is something we're really excited about. It's something new in our partnership with the district, and those are town hall meetings. So we're scheduled to plan and facilitate for in-person meetings on SB 1383 and the three-card system in the coming year. And so currently, we're working with your staff, who is coordinating with the CAC, to think through how to have these meetings in locations all across the districts and locations that will make it easy for folks to attend and show that we are reaching out to all the different corners of your service area. So that's what we have scheduled there. Next, kind of shifting gears into the digital communications, we're continuing social media support for the district, and the scope will include twenty bilingual posts on the three-card system and the transition. So for that, we're already coordinating with your staff. We know that there is a process of coordinating the materials through CalRecycle and getting them all approved and good to go. So that work is currently underway. And then on our next slide, you can see a few more deliverables. We plan to develop four additional PSA videos, and these will really get into the different facets of exactly what it looks like for your customers to adopt the new behaviors that they need in accordance with the new system. And as we've mentioned in other items throughout the agenda today, those are really helpful. It's great for people to visually see the steps that explain and walk them through how to be compliant. So those will be another great tool. And then the last item here on this slide is stock photography, and this will include new photos dedicated to the new three-card system. And by being able to take new photos, those really feed into everything else. So whether it's social media or the mailers, really any communication, things on your website, they'll include up-to-date photos on what the carts look like, what some common items are that can be confusing as far as what goes in each cart, so people can see the visuals and better understand what the system is and the different elements that factor into it. And then on our next slide, you can see a few more kind of standard deliverables. So we do include four bilingual press releases that we'll plan to work with you to develop and publish in the coming year, and some ideas on that. We want to be able to publicize the town hall meetings. We'll want to be able to publicize the PSA videos when they come out, potentially do some reminders prior to enforcement and those types of things. So looking forward to those press releases. And then the webpage as well will be updating that regarding the three-card system and keeping it up to date throughout the coming year. And then our final slide on deliverables, our continued kind of drumbeat support for the district. So that includes project management, meeting every other week with the CMSD Communications Team to make sure that our strategy is sound and the action items are moving right along. And then we also conduct quarterly communications planning meetings, and that way we can take a step back and really think about the higher-level strategy to see how things are going and if there are opportunities that we can further leverage. So I apologize if I ran through that pretty quickly, but there's a lot of exciting work coming up, and we do really always appreciate the opportunity to work with your staff and taking on this great work together. So I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jen. A question from Director Echols.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, hi, good morning, Jennifer. Just two questions, I think. But the first one, the numbers say the quarterly meetings, the twenty-some-odd social media posts, the town halls, those numbers in these slides, that's for the upcoming year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so not over the three-year deal. So each year, that, those are the numbers that we're expecting, then?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And then, or actually more of a request. One of the goals, obviously, is education of the residents. Part of that education, can I just kind of repeat it? That it's not CMSD making up this crazy three-card organic, you know, recycle, all this stuff, that we're doing this to abide by the state mandates and requirements of 1383, because there's still people out there that believe we're just some crazy weird off-the-wall organization making people do things. Just remind people that it's coming from the state as much.
Definitely, that's a great point. We'll keep that in mind.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. I had that same thought, is, you know, it's not us. Right. I mean, I'm not sure what, if we have the choice, what we'd do, but it's somebody else. Jen, I had just a quick question. On one of your slides, the goals of the three-card outreach, leverage local media to reach wider audiences. Local media is different than when I was more involved in the business world and more involved as a kid. What is your definition now of local media?
You're right, it has evolved a lot. We still think of OC Register and newspaper as one of those good outlets, but along with that, we keep in mind non-traditional media. So sometimes those are the administrators of Facebook groups who can help tell a story within communities. We do try to always include the CAC in terms of being liaisons through communities as well. So I guess that's kind of a multi-pronged answer, but we still keep in mind traditional media and send it to all of your kind of standard press release recipients, and then keeping in mind more of the grassroots community leaders as well.
Okay, so it's pretty much a combination of social media and traditional media. I know that, and this is, this is really out there, but local, local news media, television media, they are obligated to a certain extent to do PSAs. Is there a chance that we could get a PSA on Channel 11 or Channel 9 or Channel 5? Although Channel 5 is not on DirecTV right now, so I don't want to use Channel 5. But is there a possibility that we can get some PSA-type stuff?
Yeah, we can definitely look into that, and we'd be thoughtful on what messages could be the most broad when we put it out there, so we can put that down in our list of things to look into.
I would really like to see, as we get closer to this, contacting those local news sources and say exactly what Director Echols just said is, hey, the state has forced, don't use the word forced, the state has instituted mandates, and what's this local Costa Mesa Sanitary District doing? And to me, that's got a lot of punch. And if those things are possible, I'd really like to look into them.
Definitely, we'll take that.
I just want to follow, I just want to follow, because, I mean, I don't know the numbers, but traditional media is traditional media, and you could argue it's gone already. But yes, in the register, some degree, the pilot's still around. But people still watch TV, and so I'd rather put in a one-minute PSA than three ads in the pilot that no one reads anymore.
Yeah, I, I mean.
So if you look at the numbers and it works, I would go more TV-type PSA. And maybe, like you said, I think they do have to offer something, you know?
Question two, do we use Channel 3? Do you know that, Jennifer? Channel 3 is actually Costa Mesa. And when it's on, we can get mileage off of that, too.
Yeah, so luckily, our team did partner with the City of Costa Mesa last year regarding SB 1383 as well. We've got some pretty good relationships there, so we can potentially put something together that speaks to both, you know, the commercial and the residential stakeholders in terms of their waste collection and try to put something out there.
Good, yeah, just check with the city and I'll put you in touch with Channel 3.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Good. Bob?
Jen, you've got a lot of information, potential education, or it is going to be the education components. What is the schedule? Are all of the things that you've highlighted in your presentation going to be done this year? And why this year? I mean, what is the schedule for your education pieces? And maybe, Scott, what is the, what is the regulation schedule that we have to follow? I mean, what are we attempting to meet in the legislation, and when is it mandated that we have to meet it?
Well, the educational part is ongoing. It's gonna be ongoing, you know, forever, basically. But, but the last two years has been really, the state philosophy really stressed agencies for enforcement in January 2024. So they want, the state wants all the education out before it starts enforcing SB 1383, which they can do on January 1st. But even after January 1st, 2024, we're gonna continue educating. It's a, it's a never-ending process on the education part. There really is no timetable.
Um, well, go ahead, Jen.
Yeah, I can speak to the schedule for some of the outreach. So we've jumped in right away, starting with some of the things that take longer. So wanting to start with the photography, videography, and then start the design of some of the mailers we mentioned. And then some of the other items take less lead time, so we'll be working later on on doing more things like the press releases. And then obviously, starting to plan the town halls, those will come a little bit later. I believe the plan with the town hall meetings is to publicize the district's plan for whatever the enforcement structure will look like, so that could come closer to the winter. And as Scott mentioned, wanting to at least let people know that the January 2024 timeframe is when enforcement is expected. So wanting people to be aware and have the tips that they need to know, kind of going into that timeframe.
Yeah, well, between staff and Tripeppy, you must have a schedule laid out. I mean, you've given a general schedule now, but I expect staff has some expectations and/or Tripeppy has, you've just, you've given the Tripeppy view of, you know, when these things should occur. By the way, you probably need a green screen. You have a green background, but you may need a green screen to keep that, whatever that orange thing is, from showing up.
Cheeto.
And anyway, you know, Steph, I'd like to see a schedule. We have these education materials that needed to be prepared and need to be prepared in the order that Jen just outlined, but. So that, you know, when people talk to us as directors, you know, one, we can say what Director Echols said, you know, this is legislatively required by in 1383, and this is the way we're attempting to achieve it.
We do have a schedule. All of the deliverables that Jen had mentioned, we are timing lining them out based on our three-card rollout, which is in October of next year. So working backwards from all of that, we will have the town halls, the printed materials, the social media, all queued up. So we do have a schedule, and we'd be happy to share that with the board.
The three cards, the three cards should be rolled out in October.
In October of next year.
About three months ahead of some deadline.
Yes.
Okay.
Just, just as a follow-up, as we're now starting to spitball, one of the big things I'm thinking of, again, state mandates, 1383, all that. But it's like, okay, well, CMSD, what are you doing? Why are you doing this and not that and this? We're doing it better than anyone else to adhere to the mandates from the state of California. That's our message. So however our marketing specialists want to frame that, that is the message. We're doing this to save you money, save you time, save you hassle, so that everyone can abide by the state mandates, whether you like them, hate them, or don't care. We're just doing it better than everyone. That's the message in some form or fashion.
I absolutely agree. I mean, we have been out front in a lot of this stuff already, and I think we need to continue. I agree with Brett. We need to continue that message that, hey, we're looking out for you guys. That doesn't do anything for us.
Yep, exactly.
Good point. Okay, I had a question, and I forgot it, but well, that's not unusual. Anything else from the board for Jen or for Nolani? Jen, thank you very much. It's a good presentation and gets us excited, I think. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, anything else on that item? Then we'll go to oral communication and director comments. I just have two quick comments. The city district meeting, I thought, was better than usual. I mean, it moved quicker than some of the others that we've had, and the comments were pretty good, pretty good. We had a nice update on the dog park at Harper Field. That was interesting.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and then the other, or just real quick, reminder to the board that the board meeting this month has been moved up one week to August 21st because of the CSDA conference the following week. So the board will meet Monday, August 21st, not the 20, whatever. Okay, other comments?
Uh, what I have, just that on CSDA, when we're going to this conference, it's open for a lot of workshops. And so if anyone needs to get their different workshops done and get credit for us, for our district, that would be a great time to do it. And what else is there? Oh, and I'll be involved in one of the workshops, which is for ISDAQ and kind of explaining it. All the ISDAQ people will be there, but I've been asked to be, you know, one of the chapter leaders. And what else? I think that's about it. You have to excuse my voice. It's this weather. It's just done it to me. There's nothing I can do, so, but the microphone helps. I should walk around with a microphone.
Drop the mic. Okay, staff, anything else? Thank you. Good presentations, and everything was great this morning. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Those two gentlemen.
Great.
Or Jen.
Good meeting.